And it's the doctors up here and the patients down here. And that conversation really needs to get flipped so it's horizontal. And so that there are, there is much more inclusion of all of the, all sides in that conversation. And I think in the testimony that we've heard in this room over this bill, over the last several weeks or months, I can't remember how long it's been, but I, I think that that conversation speaks to that, to that problem. And I have a couple of other issues with the bill that I, I wish it would include everybody in that conversation. I'm a little challenged by distinguishing between religion and philosophy. I think that's a, that's a pretty, pretty sketchy area for me. And I'd rather have it, I would rather have it all, all in. And the other area where, where I'm concerned is frankly around my, my friends at Big Pharma, who I, you know, I watch TV, I watch those ads where you come out and the first five seconds of the ad tells you what the miracle that the drug can do. And the next 45 seconds is all the possible side effects, including diarrhea, diarrhea, and death in some certain senses. So, I mean, I, that, and it doesn't, these are the same folks that are bringing us the, the vaccines. And I, and I hope that the, the real challenge there is to make sure that the quality of that conversation goes, goes horizontal and that the, that the, the listening goes both ways in that conversation. So that, so that the medical folks are hearing from the consumers what those, what those concerns are. And, and that we come out of this, somebody described earlier to me that this, this bill is a, is a, is planting a, a first stone in a path, or a next stone in the path. And that resonates for me, I understand that. But, but the direction of the, the stone after that is, that gets placed after that is really important. And I think that that's, that, that is a challenge to everybody that's involved in that equation. So I'm, maybe gone on long enough, but I'm gonna vote for it not without some, some...
Trepidation?
It's not trepidation. It's, it's like, not without some very high expectations on the people who have been here in this room on several occasions now arguing both sides of this issue. I, I hope that engagement stays at the intensity level that it has been here in this room and that the outcome of it is something that is a positive one. And because if it isn't, then it won't be me, because I probably won't be here, but, you'll be back. So if, if, if it doesn't happen, I think, I think that Representative Sandborn's bill gives us a chance to, to start that next round of that conversation. And I hope everybody here on both sides will embrace it that way. And with that, I'll step on that first stone and thank the, thank the originator of that image for me.
I'll, I'll just say I intend to oppose the motion before us for a number of reasons. First, I think that a repeated refrain we heard in the, in the public testimony on this, and that really resonating with me and stuff with me is this idea that when there's risk, there must be choice. And I think this bill, though to a lesser extent than the bill that we're gonna be considering after this, I think this begins to approach on that area of choice for parents and, for parents to make choices about what goes into their children's bodies. It was, I, it was, it was interesting to see in the discussion of all of this that while there seemed to be, that the argument about the cost benefit of, of vaccinations, it seems that when we talked, when the discussion was about risk, there was disagreements about maybe the extent of the risk. But it seemed like there was universal agreement from, 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 from the, from medical thresholds on both sides, that there is at least some, can be some risk involved to, to, to some people. And I'm very uncomfortable kind of pushing, pushing a decision like that on, you know, when there, when there is risk, there should be choice. In addition to that, you know, we've heard people say, and I think this was said on both of the bills, this bill and the next bill we're gonna be considering, that this wouldn't, this doesn't prohibit anyone from doing anything. We're not forcing people to do something. We just wouldn't let them attend public schools if they don't comply with this. And I, I just makes me wonder, you know, okay, so where's the voucher that we're gonna give these, these parents who are uncomfortable complying with this? I mean, unless we're, I, I can't, I can't see how we could justify saying that this isn't, we're not forcing a decision on people unless we're offering to give them a voucher or give them a refund of their, of their property taxes they paid to attend public school. So, so there's that. And furthermore, I think a lot of this conversation was based on the premise that we had this very high opt-out rate of over 5%. But I'm seeing that, at least the numbers I'm seeing, that this number's been revised down to less than 4%. We're really talking, I guess the numbers I have right in front of me is 3.69%. And the kindergarten vaccination rates, at least, at least for the state overall, seem for the most part, seem to be well above the, the tipping point thresholds for what we're told the tipping point, herd immunity thresholds is for, for many of these diseases. So while maybe we can isolate individual schools and say this school here, this school here isn't, isn't above that, but we're talking about statewide policy. We're not talking about policies for individual schools. So I, I really have, I really have concerns about that. It seems like some of the numbers that this premise on seemed to, I, I think just through, just through human error, I don't, I don't think there's any, anything intentional about it. But I think just through human error, I think some of the numbers that we were operating with in this initial discussion have come back as being less, you know, not as, not as significant as we were initially suspected. And furthermore, when there are individuals who are counted in this number at 3.69%, who could be fully vaccinated except for one vaccine that their parent may be uncomfortable with, we're not talking, but we're not necessarily talking about individuals who are absolutely not vaccinated in any particular way. So even that, I guess, I question the 3.69% on, you know, if there was any way to kind of see a breakdown of, you know, you know, I guess I wonder how that number further breaks down. And how many, are we, how many people in that 3.69% are we actually talking about who are completely unvaccinated or are... So those are my, those are my concerns, why I, I've talked long enough. I intend to oppose the, the motion and, I spoke in this a lot, so any additional discussion on the motion before us? Representative Gutten?
I'm, I'm, I could officially sign off. Somebody's remarked, so I'll be signing off. Representative Stuckey, the only thing I, again, I wanna add, you know, is, to me, this is primarily a public health issue. The vaccines that we require are designed not simply to protect the children that are vaccinated, but to protect other children. I believe that I support the philosophical exemption, you know, who are facing an outbreak or a crisis, to be honest. I, I may have to reexamine that position, but I, I support the philosophical exemption. I, I think it's important for people to focus carefully on what this bill requires and what this bill adds. And, and this is not intended to be a veto of a parent's determination that they wanna claim the philosophical exemption. And frankly, I don't think that this bill adds a very high bar for parents that wanna do that. I, I think it is for parents, right, to have that ability and to understand in a way the risks, because there are risks in every medical procedure and, and other things that we do in life. And I think that parents have the right to, to weigh those risks. But I think this is an important step to make sure that, you know, informed conversations happen with respect to something that again, doesn't just protect the child being vaccinated, but other children in the community. So I'll come and support the motion.
Additional discussion, Representative Stuckey?
Just, just one other comment. We've had a, a conversation in this room recently too about palliative care and the shift in focus and the relationships between patients and doctors. And I, that's an encouraging sign. But the one caution I guess I have, and I don't know what to do about it, is what we're talking about takes, is gonna take time. And, you know, in some ways, time is unfortunately money in the world of medicine. And I, I guess one of the things I'm gonna wanna understand as this rolls out, if it does, is what is the, is there, do we need to be looking at insurance in a way that allows for conversations like this, or the palliative care conversation to be a covered cost? Or are we, are we setting ourselves up for failure by not addressing, addressing that issue? It's not part of this bill, I understand that, and I'm not trying to make it part of it. But it does, it is something that, that if I'm, if I'm putting my faith in the, in moving this ahead in a conversation, and then that turns out that that conversation because of money can't happen, I think we've missed something. So I don't know what that was worth, but it flew through my head. So I appreciate the, the conversation.
Seeing no additional discussion, then without objection, we will take a vote. All in favor of a motion of aught to pass, please raise your hand. We'll move on to LD 606. This is an act to remove the philosophical exemption from the immunization requirement for school students and employees of nursery schools and healthcare facilities. Is there any discussion or is there a motion that would be proposed? Yes, Representative Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I move aught not to pass.
Then moved in second by Representative Peterson and Representative Sanderson, seconded aught not to pass in LD 606. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion aught not to pass, please raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous vote. We will now take up LD 1076, an act to enact the Vaccine Consumer Protection Program.
So during, during, as I was walking the committee through this initial analysis, I skipped over, there are two amendments, proposed amendments to LD 1076. One was, that are a part of this packet, the one is in, is in yellow, the yellow sheet, and that was submitted by Ms. Ginger Taylor. And when she submitted it, the changes were in red and were not able to print in color. And so I underlined the areas that were in red. And so, so the changes to the initial bill are underlined on the yellow sheet. And then there was also a proposed amendment submitted by the Maine Hospital Association, which is in green, right behind the yellow packet. I believe Mr. Austin and Ms. Taylor are here, both here, if anyone has any questions for them about the contents of those amendments.
Okay, I guess we hear from Ms. Taylor first to summarize, to summarize what we're looking at.
Some of them were just, the, the first one is really just a language tweaking, if the language wasn't clear enough. It's kind of self-explanatory. There's, the second change under Part D is also, it was, the language wasn't inclusive of adults, it just, it referred to children. So we wanted to make sure families of vaccinated adults are being part of, by part of this conversation as well. The change under H was a miscommunication with the drafting office, that it made it sound like doctors could be sued and that was telling them how to respond to malpractice claim against our office. That, that is about how to help educators, if somebody reports a vaccine injury to them, where they can go, so what they can do to call Maine CDC to get guidance on how to, to move forward for evaluating out of the case. And the last one is, as we were going through this and we were looking at the, the medical exemptions, they actually dictate what, what disorders or what reactions will constitute a valid medical exemption, but they're not into, they're not a product of science. We wanna take this science, we codify science into law and say, here's what the science is now, and later we know something else. Specifically, the way usually medical exemptions are written is if you have a TB injury or had a vaccine reaction, you, you may only apply to, to get a medical exemption if, for that specific vaccine and not others. If you have a sibling tie, you still can't get a medical exemption. Except now that we know, you know, we've got more information on genetics, so we know, for example, the MTHFR gene confers vaccine injury risk, low code of ion, and there's things that we can do ahead of time. So you have families that are, are taking care and doing testing ahead of time and know that they have risk instead of, and the way the law is written now is you have to be hurt first before you get a medical exemption, instead of I know that I have a genetic predisposition that's a problem, or a previous toxic exposure that'll be a problem for me. So we want, we wanna take that out so that doctors can make these determinations on current science rather than, you know, whatever the, whatever the reaction was, you know, years ago.
Thank you. Questions? Representative Hymanson?
There is no good medical literature that the big problems that you identified as being genetic are driving vaccine injuries.
There's a growing body of literature, and that's the point, is, is science is changing.
Okay, I'll just stop.
Additional discussion? Seeing nothing, thank you, Ms. Oh, Rep., all right. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Do we wanna hear from Jeff Austin on his proposed move?
Good morning. Jeff Austin with Maine Hospital Association. I'm looking at the yellow amendment. I guess our concern is not rooted in the DHHS having information about vaccines and health. Our confusion was about vaccines and lawyers. And I'm not sure what the DHHS role is there. I'm not sure that we're, that's against it, but in terms of handouts, inserts from clinician to a patient in a room, already presuming harm and lawyer's numbers, that was where we were concerned. So looking at the yellow, I just still don't know what a lot of this stuff means, like under app, you can evaluate vaccine injury claims. That would be an obligation on DHHS. Is that evaluated from a clinical standpoint, whether does DHHS agrees that the claim, is injury claim is valid, or is it from a legal standpoint that we're talking about claims? So I'm not sure what all that still means. So not knowing what some of that means and what it makes sound like, if we propose to strike a lot of this stuff, it's, no, it's in the yellow. It's what you just reviewed, so...
Can you speak to what we've got in this?
Yeah, so we strike a lot of that stuff out.
Okay.
Again, not knowing what evaluating an injury claim would mean for the department.
Any...
Again, information from the department about health and vaccines, and they wanna put up a website. I don't think we have handouts of file attorneys' numbers from a doctor to a patient while they're trying to talk about the clinical aspects of vaccination.
Representative Malby?
Chair? I appreciate Mr. Austin's dilemma, or highlighting our dilemma, if you will. I further that, I'm not sure that I'm interested in creating such an office, but I, I would certainly, Mr. Austin, just hit on, you know, be interested in having the state provide further information in some method, be it on a website or what have you, about potential vaccine injuries or vaccine, some of the federal stuff that would be further.
I echo that sentiment. I, I think certainly, you know, some of the concerns I know were expressed was that there are federal programs, resources available that people might not be aware of, and that maybe by the time they're aware of it, the time that they have is, it's too late for them to take advantage of it. I don't know if there's, that, you know, I, I wonder, I wonder if even just, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to something like this. I think that if we were to create some kind of new office, I think that there's a lot of detail work that goes into something like this, where you don't necessarily have the, the time to really flesh out. But I wonder as, as a positive step forward, if we might be able to, say, direct the Department of Health and Human Services to have on the website links to some of the federal resources that are available, help give another portal to that, helps make these, these, these resources more, more, some of the people are aware that exist and are out there. Maybe that's directing them to the Vaccine Counter, the Compensation Fund, the Self-Reporting Bears System. I wonder if that's, I wonder if that's a way we can take a step forward that is sort of necessarily creating, creating in the office. Additional discussion? Representative Sanderson?
No, no discussion, but I am ready to make the motion because I do, I do understand that we have a lot of parents in our state who have been, I personally, impacted, and are crying out for help and at least some form of information. So I would like to make a motion aught to pass as amended. And in this amendment, I would like to direct the department to, to have a link to the federal Vaccine Compensation Fund, Injury Compensation Fund with, with information as to that. Also, VAERS with information that parents can also self-report on there and if there is...
And would that, would that, as the, your amendment, would that replace the bill?
Yes.
So, okay, so that, so that is an amendment that would replace the bill. And that was a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Are you second in the motion? Seconded by Representative Basham, moved by Representative Sanderson. Question on, on the motion, Representative Burris?
Can't you just clarify, can I, I'm sorry. So we're striking out everything except for what Representative Sanderson just said? Is that correct? Yes.
Yeah. So for clarification, my understanding, Representative Sanderson can correct me if I, if I'm wrong. This amendment would strike the language in the bill and replace it with, with result directing the Department of Health and Human Services to create links on their website to pursue federal resources around this, specifically the Vaccine Compensation Fund and the VAERS Self-Reporting System?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's the amendment, that's in the motion, that's before us. That's the move in seconded. Additional conversation? Representative Hymanson, then Representative Stuckey?
Thanks. So I'm just looking at the website now, just to see what, what's there. And there's a Maine Immunization Program Parent Resources on Vaccines. And it does link to a few different websites, VaccinatedBaby.org, WhyIChooseToImmunize is another website, Menagitis Angels, Shot at Prevention: News and Views on Vaccines, Parents With Kids With Infectious Diseases, The American Academy of Pediatrics, Families Fighting Flu, and The Children's Hospital of Philadelphia are the current ones. So there is a place to put that.
Representative Stuckey?
Thank you, Senator. I guess I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way to add on to the new idea, the thought that, that that fund, the funding of that fund be shifted from the taxpayer back over to the pharmacy?
Well, and I'll just speak to that. I mean, since it's a, I appreciate the idea, I, I wonder how we execute that considering that this, the fund is established in federal law and the laws around that are established in federal law.
I was kinda on you, Senator.
I know, I, I'm always, I'm always the one more than happy to, to flatter federal law, but it's usually about the things that, like, we can actually...
I don't know, maybe, maybe I, maybe I could vote for it if we were to send a letter.
Send a letter to the federal, federal...
Send a letter to our congressional delegation with that suggestion.
I would, I would, I would support a, a letter if we are, we're raising questions about the, the lack of legal liability in these programs. I, I can't speak for anybody but myself, but... Representative Sanderson?
If Representative Stuckey is proposing a friendly amendment that we add that this committee sent a letter to our congressional delegation requesting that this be looked at, I would be happy to accept that friendly amendment to this motion.
I can, I'll make it.
Accepted.
All right. All right, there's gonna call for a corner of office. Thank you.
And this is something that you usually.
The motion on the floor is "opt" to pass as amended. Is there any additional discussion? "Opt" to pass as amended with a letter to the congressional delegation is the amendment on, is the motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on that? Representative Gutti?
I'd just say, I think this is a thoughtful way to approach this at this point. You know, I don't, I don't, I cringe every time I hear about anybody, you know, having unlimited liability and what results of that can be very, very, you know, I think as state policymakers, we need to do our job, but I'm extremely interested in a lot. I heard of the malhearing around this issue about the way citizens interact with this board and how it's funded and, you know, I'm interested in learning more about this and I think this is a really good step. So I want to thank people for bringing forward this note.
All right. Yes, Representative Heinsohn?
Thank you. You know, throughout this, I've used that medical ethics model that is used so commonly. And this is such a perfect example of everything we deal with in medicine that, that has no real answer to it. And that is, you know, you're trading off autonomy, I want to do everything best for myself and my kid, with the herd, which is the justice issue, doing the best for everyone in the community, with beneficence, doing as well as you can, doing good for everyone that you want to do well for, and then avoiding harm, non-malfeasance. So, you know, we're always juggling that, and this is a perfect example of that, with no right answers, trying to do a little bit for, for each part of those four constructs.
Additional discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, then without objection, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion of "opt" to pass as amended, please with a letter, please raise your hand. All right, it's a unanimous vote. All right. Next, we are going to be entering the, we're going to be entering into the realm of medical marijuana.